City Council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and let the roll reflect that we do have a majority of members are present and a quorum has been established with the absence of Councilmember House. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the workshop from the regular meeting? Okay, any comments from the audience? I see none. Anybody on Zoom? And no one on Zoom. All right, councilmembers, are there any items to be considered? Councilmember Liefeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to request an item to be added to tonight's agenda. I'd like to have a conversation with council to discuss our current municipal code, Chapter 112 regarding our tobacco regulations.
Okay, motion has been made, council. I would look for a second.
A second then.
It has to be full approval, second by Councilmember Lawrence. All those in favor of the motion to add to public safety? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails and we will put it under public safety. Council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Pembel? Councilmember Verachov? Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under Public Works, we have a signature of authorization for the MCPA grant agreement for the land acquisition of 1292 North Frontage Road. And for this item, we will have an introduction by our city administrator, Dan Witichah. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a big milestone. I'm pleased to have this on the agenda. Council has asked to approve a grant agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. This would be used towards land acquisition at 1292 North Frontage Road. As you recall, this is the site that earlier this summer or fall, we settled on as a preferred location for the central water treatment plant. Looking at various criteria related to infrastructure, its proximity to the existing nitrate treatment plant, as well as the storage. It's very importantly, a commercial site and some cost effectiveness to this location. Key to this is that earlier this, not earlier this year, it's a new year, in October of '24, the Pollution Control Agency determined that we are eligible for some partial funding through the East Metro 3M settlement funds, specifically to be used towards well number five, which the central treatment plant would serve that well. The way that the MPCA is administering and distributing those funds is through a grant agreement for eligible expenses. So that's what's before you tonight, is the first grant agreement specific to acquiring the property, not to building anything, but that acquisition, which per our purchase agreement is $1,025,000. It also includes lease relocation fees and services, which at this point are estimated a little over $400,000. So the grant agreement total is $1,440,500. And as we had some discussion last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, the importance, the need for sequencing. We need this grant agreement so that we can start having SRF do that relocation service, but we can't get into that relocation service until we have this grant agreement. So although we've been talking about land purchase, we've been talking about relocating businesses, we've really been waiting on this piece to come forward. So it's really, it's an important milestone. The other piece I would note is concurrently, we are completing a Phase One environmental site assessment, which should have that report in the next couple of weeks, but it'll help us know that if or what may be wise to do or appropriate to do if we're looking at acquiring this property in terms of some environmental remediation. With that, I certainly recommend council approve this grant agreement, but I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Council, any questions?
Councilmember Liefeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is great news, Dan. And for anybody who's been following along with the PFAS journey, it was brought to our attention months ago when a preliminary map had gone out showing where we were thinking about putting three treatment plants. And so the city council, the city took that very seriously, what our community said about that and their, you know, wants and needs and I guess desires. This is just that. This is the city taking the community's input very seriously, right? The preliminary map that came out included two treatment plants that were on two of our absolutely beautiful parks in the community. And there were many community members that were upset about that and rightfully so. So I just want everyone to understand that this is a huge undertaking of our staff at the city, as well as the community speaking up for what they thought was right. And it came down to the fact that, yes, this is costing us money. The price went up because we just paid for land that the city didn't own. But it was very important to us to preserve the parks that we have and to keep the parks the way we believe the people before us, the councils before us, the city staff before us had envisioned our parks to be. So I just hope that everyone's paying attention to that and really understands what this means. So even when you think we're not listening, we really are listening. So kind of like your parents, they're always listening. So, Dan, this is excellent news and does this require a motion to approve? I would like to make the motion to approve the land agreement for land acquisition.
Thank you. Councilmember Liefeld? I'll need a second to move it through.
I'll second, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilmember Lawrence. Any discussion, council? Councilmember Liefeld, thank you for the update. That was great. Thank you. Any other discussion, council? Dan? Okay, in favor of that motion? All those in favor of that motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under Community Development, we have a resolution, site plan for the National Guard Armory, a parking lot and stormwater at 3050 Red Wing Boulevard. And for this item, we have an introduction by our Community Development Director, John Hensman. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. Have two items tonight relating to the same property. I'll get into the first one first, which is the site plan. This is the property we're looking at here, which most people recognize as the National Guard Armory. It's been there for some time. What they're proposing is a couple of items that do not affect the building, but affect the site. One of them is the addition of parking spaces, about 106 new spaces, primarily in this area here, and a slight expansion of the parking lot down here off 31st Street. The other would be the creation of ponds on site for stormwater treatment. And so those are the two items that we're reviewing tonight. We did have the Planning Commission come forward and review this at their January 13th meeting. There was limited discussion at the meeting and unanimous recommendation for approval from that body. So we are bringing this forward for your approval tonight. This is what the site looks like. This is specifically what they're doing. This is the new parking lot coming off of the east and stormwater systems here. When we get into the second item, which is the agreement, the stormwater agreement, what we're looking at is this connection point right to the east here. This is the property line. This is the pond. And we're looking at the creation of an easement area here that would provide the National Guard Armory rights to discharge within this area and rights to install and maintain infrastructure to make that connection. So that would be the second item tonight. I can stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Just for clarification too, this building, this site is really just for the armory to store their military vehicles and there's, I mean, right? It's not an act, or is it an active building at this time? Do we know?
Mayor, I'm not aware of any changes in activity here. I think it's primarily for the storage of equipment that they have. The parking lot itself needs to be repaved, and so they're making some additions along with that.
Okay, thanks, John. Councilmember Verachov?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Hensman's last comment there just answered my question, which was exactly what I think we were all getting at. Same thing, Councilmember Liefeld? Yes. Which is why now, what's going on, but hearing that there's just simply changes needed to be for the parking lot. I understand. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Pembel?
John, what's the, how many years has that been there now? Do we have any idea? I know the parking lot's in terrible shape.
I wanted to say '77.
Okay.
And I think that's what I had.
It's well past due, some improvements, so, yep, I support the project.
Seventy-three.
Oh, seventy-three. Okay. Thanks, Dave. Councilmember Pembel? Any other discussion, council? Then I would look for a motion. Councilmember Pembel with the motion.
Second.
And Councilmember Liefeld with the second. No new discussion? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion? Opposed of that statement? Motion state by saying nay. Easy for you to say. And that motion prevails. Thanks, John. And you can go on to authorize the signature for the permanent stormwater.
Yep. Same project, same area. This would be a permanent stormwater easement to provide for that storage and infrastructure, which I mentioned earlier. I can stand for any questions on that.
Thank you, John.
Motion to approve the authorized signature of permanent stormwater easement.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Liefeld. And a second by Councilmember Pembel. New discussion? Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails too.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. As we know, we've added, under public safety, for tobacco license, this item. We will have, oh.
Is there one for John Doherty?
We do? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. It's in the small print. Also, under Community Development, the biggest job you have tonight is delivering your annual report.
Sure.
Thanks, John.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. So before you, and within your packet, I have the full report itself, which outlines the activities within the department, but I wanted to provide a few highlights here tonight for your consideration. Background on the Community Development Department. What we do is we are, take care of the city planning, zoning, building inspection, code enforcement, historic preservation. So that is the department, but there's about 10 hardworking individuals that are within the department that bring all these great things that we're talking about tonight. So what happened last year? We had a lot of new single-family homes, which was great. We had 43 new single-family units, about $12 million in valuation. This is the most single-family homes we've had in the last 20 years. So this is a great sign of the single-family market coming back, or growing more, I should say. When you take a look at the overall permits for the year, they were down. We had a number of construction of apartment projects the last couple of years, in which the permits were issued in earlier years. So the permit numbers were down, but the single family was certainly up. We did see completions of some great projects, current 33 apartments, both buildings complete, open, and doing well. That's 211 units, I think, altogether. Heritage Ridge out on the east side of town, General Seabean Drive in Fallbrook. We've got, of the three additions that have been approved for construction, 60 of the 80 home sites have been, are either have permits or completed to date. So only 20 more homes, sites left there. Lake Isabel Flats was approved and constructed, construction completed last year for 89 units downtown. And then Vermillion Acres is under construction and moving along better than it has been in the past, down on Conner Road 47. Villas of Pleasant was another one that we saw a lot of activity. We are now down to only six of the 38 sites left for construction there. So good items. On commercial industrial development, we saw the United Heroes League project move forward with the construction of the stadium and locker room facilities for Hockey Team 26. Rio Grande Trucking was approved, and they continue with their building permit. We saw Storage Works completion of their project and other facilities within town. Within the Planning Commission itself, one of the things that we worked on this year and are continuing to work on into '26 is the Highway 55 and Jacob Avenue Growth Plan. This shows the version here. I know council is well aware of this. What we're looking at doing with this is to provide the answer to the question of what does the city want to see if somebody comes forward for requests from development? What we're not doing is taking this plan and going to property owners and saying, thou must adopt this plan and develop. We're using this as a model for people that want to develop, to show them what we desire. And so that is out for public comment. That'll be coming for you for some final adoption later on this year. Spent a lot of time on cannabis ordinance and permitting from the Planning Commission and council standpoint. Had five permits for sale after the adoption of the ordinance, the aud, ordinance, easy for me to say. And then chicken, ducks, and quail, we opened that back up again, and we did some expansions. So good things there. These are some of the other projects that we have under construction. The other big one coming up that we started in '24, which will continue on in '25, is the Hastings zoning code. This is something that has not been fully updated since 1996. Our consultant, Code of Mechanics, has been involved in this for about the last five months behind the scenes, and we're ready to take it forward to Planning Commission for a workshop on the first section of it coming up next Monday. Looking at the numbers here, here's what we had for permits for the year, 43 single-family. When we looked at '24, we had 24 single-family homes in 2023, 182 apartment units at that time. From a commercial industrial standpoint, we had 81 new, new industrial, new commercial industrial remodels for $20 million in valuation. The permit numbers rose slightly from last year. Permit valued down a little bit. We had some more expensive projects from a valuation standpoint in '23. From a land supply standpoint, we're taking, we've got a pretty good supply at the moment. For lots that are immediately available for single-family, we've got 139. So that's a few years' supply, which is good. It's always good to have a supply of lots of about three or four years so that the price equalizes on that. You have too small of a supply, the prices are unnecessarily driven up. We also have a planned lot inventory beyond that. These are individuals that have sought guidance from us and have went through some planning on properties. And then we have other people that have kicked the tires beyond that. So we've got a good supply as we look forward out there. This is a examination of the housing permits over the past few years here. You can see that we had a couple very big years with the purple in apartments from about 2018 on, and then the blue here representing single-family. The one thing you did not see in here is this green, which is the two to nine units are typically what you'd find in townhomes. For whatever reason, we've not seen really any of these since the late 2000s. Other cities have seen that growth. We haven't. There's been talk in future projects that that might be a component. We'll see what happens. Onto Hedra activities here. Our big project in 2024 was what we internally call Block 28, but we're looking at calling the Hastings Gateway Project. The whole reason behind it really stems from this picture here. If you're crossing the bridge into Hastings and you've got the view of Fourth Street, the view you have on the right-hand side is a bunch of buildings that have seen better days and not the best image that we present to the public when they're coming through Hastings. And so as properties have come up for a purchase, we've been buying those over the last four years or so, to the point that we own almost the entire block now, which is great. The green down here represents properties that were acquired prior to last year. And then the gold properties here are the properties we picked up. This is the former Wells Fargo site. So we own 90% of the block right now. The only part that is missing is Spiral Pizza, and then a lot Spiral Pizza owns over here. So we are moving forward with Hedra this year. One of the goals that we have is to have a developer under contract this year and to go through some site planning and move forward at that point. What we're looking to do is on the right here, this is the vision document we had from the Vermillion Street corridor study from about 2018 or so. What it shows us here is a mixed-use building on the corner with commercial and residential above it, maybe some more commercial residential here, and then parking behind it or parking underneath it. One of the things that this does not take into consideration on the backside is the proximity to Wilson Park here. So we, we want to be able to have the focus over here, that's important, but we may have more stuff happening on this, depending on what we might be able to do with parking and going down at that point. So this is the big project we move forward with in '24 and into '25. Other things we worked on last year were, we had this retail opportunity site at Pleasant and South Frontage Road, as the council knows. Council transferred that property to Hedra. Hedra had a purchase and development agreement with an entity that ended up following through. However, we still are fielding inquiries about the site, so we may end up selling this for development in the future as well. So stay tuned on that one. Another thing we did is we took the 213 Ramsey Street building, which Hedra owns as well, and had a two-year lease for the Hastings Prescott Arts Council to use the space for their activities. This helps us in a couple of different ways. One, we've got a lot of properties and projects that Hedra desires to do. And what we need to be is strategic in the planning that we have. Now, our primary project that we're doing for Hedra is Block 28, the Gateway Project. We look at other properties like 213 Ramsey and a few other holdings. These are going to be secondary after the project at the Gateway is completed, but it's good to have those activated during the period of time and not just vacant. So it's great to have the activity, provide a space for a needed entity, and to have some life in that site. As we mentioned earlier, Rio Grande Trucking, we, we have land with it, or Hastings Industrial Park that we do sell, so we did have a sales agreement on that. We hope to close in the next couple of months to construct the trucking facility as shown on the right. And then one more confluence story here, we did get awarded for the Rescape Innovation Award for Minnesota Brownfields last year as well. Minnesota Brownfields is an environmental cleanup organization, reuse of polluted properties, and it recognized the unique challenges for environment to clean up on the site. So that was great to have that award. Within Hedra, we operate the facade improvement grant program as well. In last year, we had $26,000 distributed to seven projects that contributed $134,000 in new investment within the facades of buildings. This one here, I wish I had a better picture of the after, because you kind of look, is this the after? No, this is the before, as we all know, down here. This is the midpoint. This is going to have a nice mural next year. But I wasn't out there the day with my camera when all the bricks were falling off the building. So it was definitely necessary, as we all know, and we'll have better pictures next year. One of the things we've been doing the last few years is Makers Market. Twice a month last year during the summer, Hedra coordinated Makers Market with the concert series down at the pavilion. This provides space for artists, makers, crafters, and small brands to sell their ware. It started out from a project that we may have had 10, 15 vendors the first year to 25 to 30 vendors for events. We've doubled the amount that's occurred over the last two years on this one. And our impact on that is going to be even stronger going into '25. We are going to have this event on every Thursday night concert series for this. So this will be interesting to see that this takes off. I think the biggest point from an economic development standpoint is this, is people will know that there's going to be activity on Thursday nights within the downtown. They know the concert series is there now. Now, if there's food trucks and if there's wares to buy, it even increases the types of activities downtown and the number of people that will be going there, which will be great. One of the things that was gifted to us last year was the local affordable housing aid from the state legislature. We received $114,000 in funding to foster affordable housing development and preservation. What we did is we took action to have the Dakota County Community Development Agency manage a couple programs on our behalf. One is a home improvement loan program, providing up to $35,000 in low-interest loans to single-family homeowners, and a radon mitigation program. So more information will be coming on that with agreements in the next coming months. One of the great values that we do as well is open to business. The open to business provides free entrepreneur assistance and one-on-one guidance for loans and existing and potential entrepreneurs in growing their business. We pay, I think, $55,000 annually for this program, and it reduces in, in a dozen or more activities and business visits with people in town that need help starting businesses. So a great value that we have here. Hedra's been involved as well with strategic planning. So last year in May, we adopted a strategic plan, and we will be looking at this as spring goes on. One of those is the development of underutilized sites, primarily the purchase of 400 Vermillion Street, allocating funds in next, in this year's budget to the Westview Mall to provide some assistance there, and then the lease to H-PAC, supporting the affordable housing stock with La Haugh Funds, helping out with the Chamber of Commerce with the Facade Improvement Grant Program, and marketing. And our Economic Development Coordinator, Alex Menke, has been a regular attendee of the DBA meetings, has monthly meetings with the Chamber of Commerce too, to make sure there's still a good connection there, and then make improvements to the development process and continue our business retention and expansion. Last year, Alex went through some training on how to better facilitate those, which we're looking forward to implementing this year. And then we also have drop-in business visits. These are just uncoordinated, unscripted, hey, how you doing? We did 70 of those last year, and we're going to ratchet that up next year as well. So those are some of the activities that we're involved in in 2024, and I can stand for any questions.
Great, John. Thank you. Councilmember Verachov?
Thank you, Mayor John. This is absolutely incredible. Wow, what a year. This is amazing. If I were you, I would print this up in some kind of way that I could send this out to everybody on my Christmas card list, because this is just an enormous thing to be incredibly proud of. I'm just blown away at just the amount of information, the graphics. I just, I love the thoughtfulness that goes into this, you, walking us through each one of these things, taking us kind of at a, I know we've kind of done deep dives in a lot of our meetings over the past couple of months, but I just can't say enough good things. Congratulations to you and your team for an incredible year of work. I would just love if there was some way, I just started kind of going on the city website to see if this report was available on there, but I would love if there was.
It will be.
Wonderful. If that our residents and constituents would have easy access to this too. I think this is just filled with a lot of really helpful information. And again, I just really commend you and your department for the thoughtfulness that you bring to helping to build out and plan for the future of Hastings. I know that for me personally, I love seeing this growth, and I love seeing some of these, these newer housing developments, but for me, I'll always love that they are kind of snuggled in beside cornfields. I love that kind of dichotomy that is Hastings. And so I just can't say enough good things. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all this information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Councilmember Liefeld?
Thanks, Your Honor. Ditto. What a great presentation. So I do have a small question, which is going to lead into what I'm asked to discuss in the next session, section. Can you give us a brief, like, you know, elevator, elevator speech of what happens when somebody wants to open a business in Hastings?
Sure. Depends on who they call. I mean, sometimes they'll call me, sometimes they'll call Building Department on something that would be renovation of a building. If they're in my hands, what I look at is, hey, what are you trying to do as far as the business goes? And there's really two aspects of it. One, if you need assistance and you're a first-time entrepreneur, I get them in touch with open to business. They're great for guiding people down. The other one is if you, when you found a location, you know, how does it fit in within a zoning? Will you need any permits? Or does it fit within the zoning? And then getting involved with the Building Department, having our building inspector walk through the business itself, let them know what sort of impacts may be needed for, dependent upon the changes that they want to do. So I think that is the important part early on, is to look at those two things. And to do those two things prior to any sort of firm commitment on a specific site, so you know the answer's going in.
So if an individual were interested in opening any sort of business in town, maybe I want to sell clown hats or something, do you, what do you, what would the city say to me as far as I'm looking at an area in midtown and I really think I can make a go of selling clown hats?
Mm-hmm. Most of the uses that we have, that, in the zoning code, the uses permitted within a zone are very generalized within it. The thing that we're not involved in is, for the most part, regulating the number of a certain type of entity that's out there. We may look and go, boy, there's a lot of gas stations, or there's a lot of X, Y, or Z out there. Why is the city allowing all these things to occur? From a zoning standpoint, we don't have any regulation on that. We provide within our code the ability and the, and the rules for how to open a business, but the market determines how many of those businesses will be opening. There may be other things that we have with licensing that may be different, but for the vast majority of businesses... the vast majority of businesses, it really comes down to zoning code allowing it in the free market, regulating the numbers that's viable.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so sorry. I did have one just quick question, if you would indulge me. One of the statistics that did jump out at me was when you had mentioned the townhomes and that our town is not seeing any significant growth in that style of living, and I think the number you gave was since 2008. Do you have a theory as to why that is? I'm just so curious, as we look at so many different housing developments, like in what we're seeing in Rosemont and in Woodbury and other cities around us. Do you have any thoughts there?
I'm stumped on that one as well. And I've asked that to developers out there, the similar question. Some of the responses I got back were that the land prices here are not as expensive areas that are closer in, so it allows people to not share walls. And most people prefer to have a home that doesn't have an adjoining wall. So, we see some growth in the villa homes, which are essentially detached townhomes and an association. If the land prices or the housing prices get to a point where that's not as easy for people to afford, I think we will see that.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Councilmember Leifeld, just to piggyback a little bit on her, and John, you and I have had this discussion. We want to be able to help businesses come to town. I mean, if there's an interest out there in a building to buy and you're excited to buy, because you have some maybe cash flow or something, and you have an idea, bring it to our Building Department first to see, is it suitable for that building? What's going to be needed? You know, get in front of it before you find out you buy it, and it's going to take a lot more than you think in dollar-wise to have it, you know, like our sack-and-wag fees and things like that. Meet with us first before you do a purchase. I mean, it's a simple phone call, and maybe you can get in in a few days to talk to someone just to talk and help you talk them through it. Just because we've heard discussions about that, well, had I known that, you know, that type of thing. So, we want to be there ahead of it, right? My other comment is, question, whatever you may call it, is Block 28, now that people know that the city owns it, Hedra owns it, they're going to say, well, what's the city going to do with it? Can you go through a process of, do we go after people? Do they come to us? How does that, the whole dynamics of building a block or reconstructing a block, how does that happen?
Sure. What we're doing now is we're having informal meetings with the type of developers that do mixed-use projects in cities like us. There's a handful of those individuals around, and we've got some interest from kicking the tires on that one. Ultimately, I see Hedra reviewing proposals from a handful of individuals on what would happen on the site, and then with Hedra and council's assistance, picking out a developer and then entering into a development agreement to secure the site and to provide for the development to take place on that one. So, we'll be going forward on that one in 2025. This is a process that we used with Hudson Building, the Confluence, when about 10 or so years ago, we had four or five different entities that came forward for the reuse proposals for the building, and ultimately, we picked Confluence and they went forward.
Okay, great. Great information. I love seeing this at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, because we, you know, everything's mealpiece together, and then you finally see these beautiful graphics and a beautiful updated process of what you have done and your staff has done all year. So, appreciate it. Thank you. Any other discussion, council? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, under public safety for this item, we will have an introduction by Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. So, I spoke with the mayor, Dan, our city administrator, to ask what it would take to just move forward a conversation with council regarding our existing ordinance and process for tobacco licensing. Okay? Personally, as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, I feel like the committee process would be a good start, and looking to Councilmember Lawrence and Councilmember Verachov, for us to just have these conversations and see, do we need more info? Do we want to send it on to the Public Safety Commission, right? I would look to both of you to say, is that something you wouldn't mind spending time on and looking to the, you know, to city staff and the mayor, of course? And in this conversation, I will tell you, and what I said earlier was that we're listening, this came from a conversation that was being had on Facebook. I do a really good job at reading what's out there and an even better job at staying out of it. Nobody's going to listen to my three-sentence response to what is happening within the city. So, my question to John Hensman, our community investment coordinator, and I love how he's getting back up just in case. The reason I asked that question about business, for starters, was I read and see so constantly of, we don't need more of this, we need this, we need this. Understand, right, that if you, as a community member or someone out of the community, wants to start a business in Hastings, welcome, right? If it fits, as we were just told, the zoning requirements of that location for that business, as a council, we don't really have a right or a reason, a legal reason, to say no when somebody wants to bring something in. Note, comment here is regarding tobacco shops, okay? None of us up here own them. If somebody comes in and thinks that they can make money off of a business, and they have the money to do that, and they have the facility, and that's what this process is, right? So, right now, we have five tobacco shops, not including businesses that sell tobacco products, okay? We have five tobacco shops and two more that are currently in the process of getting their approvals through the city, which would bring us to, if I'm right, seven, okay? I'm not saying that that is something we should regulate, but I am saying it's something we need to maybe, that we need to talk about. The government, the state of Minnesota, regulates on-sale liquor licenses within a community. It doesn't regulate off-sale. The state does not regulate tobacco sales, nicotine sales. So, I believe that that is something worth our looking into, and we all do know over the last number of years, with the marijuana regulations and things that are coming, everything is up in the air right now. Again, I'm not a business owner, and I do feel that these businesses are putting themselves in a position in case the state were to allow marijuana sales through their type of a business instead of the dispensary that we've all been talking about, right? So, I just would feel that this would be a good time for us to get ahead of it, send it to Public Safety Committee, let us chat it out, let us talk to staff, see what we, how we feel, get some more input from the community. And again, to the mayor's point and to my question, John, we do not want to make it hard to do business in this community. If you think you can make a successful business selling clown hats, then open up a store, right? I'm not going to tell these tobacco store owners that they can't make it here, because why are they still coming, right? So, that being said, I don't know what it takes as far as if I have to make a motion to send the topic, and while we're on that topic, I would like to wrap, if we could, within Public Safety Committee, the conversation of alcohol licensing, just to get our hands on it when I'm doing number counting. And they're regulating us at 18. I'm not sure what that means. And then I'm seeing 11 off-sale. Again, that's just my rough. And have that conversation. So, I'll make a motion to send the topic to Public Safety Committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld, if you want to take a second and then discuss. Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. I, too, read many, many, many comments that are on a lot of our different community Facebook pages. I, too, am pretty good about not replying, and so this did catch my eye as well. I support this idea. I think that this would be a good move for this to come back to committee, or however Dan guides us in terms of what the next steps are. I think that this is a fine line that you very well pointed out, that we don't want to make anyone difficult in any way to do business within our city. But at the same time, as the body that is responsible for helping to plan out what this community looks like next week, next year, 10, 20 years from now, I think that we need to be mindful of that and.
A great thing to take on. Now, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion, council? Dan?
Just as a point of clarification, if you're looking at a list of establishments that sell alcohol and thinking that there's 22, I think you said, on-sale establishments, I suspect that there's a mix of different licenses in there. There's probably 3-2 or wine licenses that might be boosting that overall count, but those are regulated differently, just for clarification, since I was thrown out there in a meeting.
Thank you. That does help. Dan? So, in the state regulation, then, 3-2, because the statute refers to on-sale license, and then it goes into intoxicating liquor. So, does that not include the sale of 3-2? So, that would exclude.
Separate license.
Counselor?
Yes, that is a separate license category under state law.
That answers the question, then. So, that would remove gas stations that are selling 3-2 products. Perfect. Thanks, Dan. I appreciate that clarification.
But we do have, is it 18 liquor license that is available in our community?
Yes, the cap under state law for on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses is 18. I do not know off the top of my head how many are actually in use.
Right, okay. Thank you. With that, a motion, first and second. No other discussion, council. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay.
Nay.
And that, oh, okay. That motion still prevails. All right, council, any announcements? Okay, I do have a few, a couple. Recycle your old lights still. The Hastings Holiday Lights Drop-Off Collection, residents can drop off at their unwanted lights at the joint maintenance facility at 920 10th Street West during the holiday season, and that runs until January 31st. Hastings Chamber of Commerce will host the annual State of the Community with the presentation by city and school district on Wednesday, February 5th. Meetings, the Friday, this Friday, January 24th, 7:30 a.m., is the Parks Committee Joint Powers Agreement Committee. Monday, January 27th, 7:00 p.m., the Utilities Committee meeting. 7:00 p.m. for Planning Commission on Monday, January 27th. Monday, February 3rd, is a 7:00 p.m. city council regular meeting. With that, I would stand for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Pembel, Councilmember Lawrence, no discussion. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. We are adjourned.